Check, check. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Check, check. Sure if we're getting, yep, we're getting sound there. Question is, is it coming in the right spot? Select microphone, digital audio interface, yep. And yep, there we go. All right. This guy here. Check, 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 check. Testing one, two, three.
You're sounding good. I mean, there's a password for the meeting, but usually you just click the link and it pops right open. I wonder why it's hidden. You just click the link and it does that?
Yeah.
Well, if I do that to me, it might be a hoax. I mean, the password is also in that key.
Oh, it says the password.
I mean, also there's the door. You don't have to do that. It's just click the link and it... It must be a new thing.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, how's it sound?
Yeah, that's good.
Just like before?
Yep. Yep.
All right.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Resolution R-20. Roll call, please. Present. Sorry about that, I skipped right over. Resolution R-20-187 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to ratify all decisions made at regular and/or special meetings of the Adrian City Commission held remotely between May 1, 2020 and December 7, 2020. May I get a motion? Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
I've got a question. I've seen two different copies of the agenda. I'm not sure how, why, or how to understand. I don't understand why we are ratifying decisions that we're going to make someday in the future. December 7 doesn't seem to make as much sense as October 7, which is the date I saw on the other agenda. Can anybody explain that? Mr. Elliott?
The, I have the memo in front of me and it says October 7, 2020, but then on the agenda it said December 7. So is it a typo? It says October 7 in the resolu-- oh, this one does. I have one in my hand. Yes, because even this resolution, I think I have an updated one right here. It says October 7. So we have an amendment to Resolution R-20-187 to ratify all decisions made at regular and/or special meetings of the Adrian City Commission held remotely between May 1, 2020 and October 7, 2020. Any other commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Helt with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please. Yes. All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the interviews, but before we begin, are there any questions from the commissioners before we begin? Mr. and Mrs. Murray are trying to catch everybody as they come in. Yes, Mr. Murray, correct? Yes, and they're putting them in a room. So we'll be interviewing. The question, just for Zoom, because I know you can't hear everybody. The question by Commissioner Roberts was if we want to do the resolution and vote tonight to appoint someone to the City Commission or wait until the meeting on Monday, October 19? Yes. Just so everyone in, on Zoom in the public or in the audience here, so that you know what's going to happen, we have to use the microphones because they cannot hear on Zoom without them. So to make it easier, Commissioner Roberts is going to be asking them all the same questions as we proceed, and then they have their own microphone where they will be standing and they will be answering using that microphone. That way, we're not having to pass a microphone around. So just so everyone's clear, Commissioner Roberts will be asking the questions for us. We ready? Mr. Murray, do we have our first candidate? Thank you. So first up, we have Jamin Baker. You'll likely need to turn it on too. I'm not sure that it's been turned on.
Okay. Hello?
There you go. Good job. All right, Mr. Baker. I am Commissioner Mary Roberts, and I'm going to be asking all the questions tonight just for COVID procedures. It'll be easier if just a minimal amount holds the mic essentially and we're not sanitizing it all the time. Okay? But you can address your answers to all of the commission. So at this time, I'd like you to do an opening statement about your background and what is your motivation for wanting to be on the commission?
So my background?
Hold it right up.
My background, it's not a big background. But, like, what do you mean, like, where'd I serve or background? Like, what about me? Sorry.
Yep, just anything you'd like to share with us about your background, what you've done in your work history, where you grew up, any of that stuff.
Okay, I'm from Adrian. I grew up here in Adrian. Born here in Adrian. Graduated in 2006. Work-wise, I, most of my job's been landscaping. I also have worked at Subway. Right now, I work at Adrian Dominican Sisters Grounds Crew. Ask more questions.
Sure. Just, why do you want to be on the commission?
I always had interests in city issues. Kind of got away from it, but always had interests. And just kind of want to, I don't know, just kind of want to see Adrian kind of move forward. Guess I just kind of care about Adrian, I guess, kind of thing. I mean, born here and, yeah, I mean.
Yep, that's fine. You don't need to be nervous. So don't worry about that. All right, so next, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the city of Adrian?
Biggest challenge? Well, I have my opinions, but.
I'm sorry.
I have my opinions, but probably blight is one of the challenges I see. Homelessness.
Stupidness.
Drug houses. Like, when seeing Ice Drive right there, turned into a drug house. I live in Sienna Heights. Right there at Broad and Front, used to be a nice house, turned into a drug house. So I guess that's just one of those things, I guess. I don't know what City can do, but... Roads, definitely. Roads, I know that, I met with Matt before. I know that they're working on a plan, so, but definitely, I think that more money, maybe even from, my opinion, the oil trust could even be put some of the money towards roads to keep them up. And maybe not go with... I mean, it's good to go with Louis Fitter, but sometimes they kind of just make sure it's done right. What else?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes. So if you can just have it really close to you.
It's just...
There you go. There you go. Yep. Okay.
He said it ordered a certain way. Okay.
The next question is, what is Adrian's greatest asset?
Adrian's greatest asset? I would say the Crosswell. Is the geologist. I believe there's a lot of, I mean, in the past, a lot of rich history here, what I, what I heard. Is that right? Asset?
Yeah, that is fine. It's your time to tell us what you think, so... Do you want me to move on to the next one?
Well, parks. I mean, we have a lot of parks here in Adrian. That's a, that's a good thing. Okay, move on.
Okay. All right. Question four. What is one thing you hope to accomplish if you're on the Commission?
It's a good question. I guess accomplish just working with the other Commissioners and I guess, it's a, just working with, working with whatever, whatever I can do. I guess that's accomplish. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So how much time do you think you would, could, or should spend per week or per month on city business? And how will you prepare for the meetings?
How do I prepare for the meetings? I guess study the packet or however you guys do it. What was the question? Can you say the question again?
How much time do you think you would spend each week or each month being a Commissioner?
Okay.
There you go.
I guess as much time as I can to... I don't know.
So have you been in any positions where you have had to make difficult or unpopular decisions? And if so, how did you, or do you think you'll be able to deal with residents being unhappy with your decisions?
I'm sure that residents would be unhappy with decisions that any Commissioner will make, good or bad. I mean, everybody has an opinion.
What is your vision for Adrian? And do you have a plan for achieving that vision?
Like, I mean, like I said, I just want to see Adrian, just thrive, the vision, just... I guess just, if any vision, I guess, just see the Adrian thrive, get the mall. I mean, I don't know what's, what's the story in the mall, but I guess just not see abandonment and just see Adrian go the right direction, even on the east, especially in the east side. Yeah.
Okay. Just a couple more. So tell us about the most difficult challenge you faced in trying to work cooperatively, cooperatively with someone who did not share the same ideas?
Can you repeat that one?
Sure. Can you tell us about a time, tell us about the most difficult challenge you have faced trying to work cooperatively with someone who did not share the same ideas?
I'm sure I had, there's been incidents. I'll pass some. I don't know how to answer that one. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. So how would you handle a situation where you know confidential information has been disclosed?
How would I handle, what's that confidential information disclosed? Like, what do you mean, like?
Well, the City often, we oftentimes are privy to information that we can't share with the public.
Okay. How would I feel about it?
Right. If you knew something was disclosed, how would you handle that?
Keep it disclosed. I mean, I mean, depends what it is. I mean, I mean, if it's a city issue, yeah, and it's I mean, something that's not to be in public.
Correct.
Then, yeah, I would, as a Commissioner, yeah, I would keep it disclosed. I'm trying. I...
That's okay. So what assets will you bring to the Commission?
I guess, what's that exactly mean, like?
Like, how would the Commission benefit from having you on the, on the Commission?
I guess. I think there would benefit. Just, I mean, I always have ideals and I can always, you know, work with, they can, I can bring my ideals to them and see what they think and, and, yeah.
Okay. All right. And what's your favorite thing about living in Adrian?
That it's a small town. That's pretty much. A lot of people talk negative about you, but, I mean, well, it depends on who it is, but so am I. Some people I know have. I think it's a, it's a good town.
All right. So those were all the questions. Do you have anything you'd like to share that we didn't cover?
Not really. I mean, I just, I guess to add into volunteer work, I man, I've never been in no boards or nothing, but I volunteered a few years, so. Been a while, actually. I helped plant trees with a former Commissioner here, Tom Foye. Planted, yeah, trees. Maple City, really, I think. I served in churches. Church I go to, I served. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If you want to turn that off and just set it right down there, that would be great. Are we, and you're welcome to have a seat in the audience. You can stay or you can leave. It's up to you. And how are, how are we, are we sanitizing this before the next person? Maybe? Okay, there we go. Hi. So can you make sure that mic is on? Nope, it's not. So...
How about that?
There you go.
There we go.
All right.
I will do that.
We have people on Zoom that need to be able to hear you.
Okay.
So I'm Commissioner Mary Roberts and I will be asking all the questions so that we don't have to pass the mic around and have everyone touch it due to COVID. Okay?
Pleasure to meet you, Ms.
Pleasure, pleasure to meet you. Mr. Jacobowski, correct?
It is. It's Tom or Jake, either way.
All right. But you, please direct all of your answers to the whole Commission, though.
I will do that.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, thank you for coming tonight and we'd like to start off with an opening statement from you that goes over your background and what's your motivation for wanting to be on the Commission?
I guess my background is I've been in construction my entire life. My dad was a general contractor and went in as a union journeyman contractor, or union journeyman carpenter, did that for about 20 years. Went to, came here for, to run track. I was recruited for Adrian College in Sienna. I graduated from Sienna and ended up going to Arizona in order to get my doctorate, which found out what out-of-state tuition was and decided that wasn't the right course for me. So I continued to work. Became a project manager. Yeah, for the past 30 years, I've been a project manager in the construction industry. I've built hospitals, hotels, casinos, a lot of public works projects. Been involved in almost every utility there is and some high-end technical stuff like wafer fabs for like Intel, Motorola, things like that. Built projects all over the world. So as far as why I want to be here, I traveled, my wife and I both traveled as our jobs. And when we settled down, we decided we wanted to do something together. So we came here, we were here in Adrian. We came back here with our kids when they, my son was going into high school in Arizona. And we decided that we wanted to bring them back to experience the, kind of the salt of the earth. You know, what we grew up with, the blue collar mentality, a kind of down-home, you know, real salt of the earth kind of people. And that's the kind of education we wanted to give them. When we came back, we had property here in Adrian still and we moved here. When we retired, my wife and I both retired two years ago and we decided that we wanted to do something together. No more traveling. So we opened a restaurant here in town and we found it's a lot of fun. We've met a lot of people. We want to become involved in the community and we have. We hear stories all day long. People, their political views, their, their families. We, we know them, their kids, their families, their mothers, their, pretty much everything that they do. And we have a lot of regulars and we get an awful lot of stories. And we've learned a lot about Adrian. You know, we've actually come to, to see that this is a really good town. There's some really good people here. They're very wholesome. They're very generous. They're very giving. And we want to help them out. And I tell people they need to get involved, that, you know, it's not everything. You can't just expect things to happen your way or things to go bad, or you can't sit at home and complain about things that, you know, you wish would have gone a different way or they would have voted a different way. Tell people you need to get involved. And I'll never tell anyone to do something that I wouldn't do myself. So that's why I'm here. I'm here to get involved, get involved with the community. I believe I can bring some experience and some, hopefully some, a little different perspective to the, to the Commission.
Great. Thank you. So the next question is, what is the biggest challenge facing the City of Adrian?
Jobs. Originally, I went to school back here, back, unfortunately, I have to say 40 years ago, but there was just one Wendy's in town. That was the only place that you could go to eat. You know, there was maybe Marcos Pizza and a couple other little places, but there was really nothing in town. Over, we went away for 20 years, came back and were absolutely astounded because there were things like, oh my, there's a, look at that, there's a Red Lobster here, you know, which made my wife extremely happy. And there was shopping. There were stores. Now you're seeing, you know, like the Adrian Mall, you've got people moving out. You have you, unless you have industry, unless you have jobs, it's hard for people to... You, unless you have industry, unless you have jobs, it's hard for people to, to make a living. You can't. Where are you going to commute to? You know, my kids are going to Metro Airport because there's no local jobs that they can work at. People drive to Ann Arbor. You know, I make that, the drive up to Ann Arbor in the morning, and it's like, there's a string of cars leaving Adrian, heading up to Ann Arbor every day. You know, it's like, if we could get those jobs here, the types of industries that we need here in Adrian, where people can live here and work here and spend their money here. That's, but it's going to be a challenge getting those jobs here. You've done a great job with the marijuana industry, okay? You've brought a lot of, lot of money to town. There is, there's a lot of money that came to town with the marijuana industry. But I think that has to be tempered too, that you have to watch that you don't push out the other industries, that you don't make it too expensive to buy a warehouse, or buy land, or, you know, to bring a business here to Adrian. So you have to, have to watch that. But in the meantime, you know, it's, it turned out there were a lot of people opposed to it, but marijuana has brought a lot of money. They've been very good. They're very quiet, for the most part. I mean, you don't hear anything, so as long as those tax dollars are coming in, I think everybody's pretty happy with it right now. But we need to bring more jobs here to town, get people here, so.
Okay. Okay, next question is, what is Adrian's greatest asset?
Adrian's greatest asset is its people. There are some wonderful people here. I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't have agreed with that, or I wouldn't have said that back when I was in college. You know, there's a, that's the little mentality, and it's a little arrogance when you go to college over here, it's, you know, it's you versus the townies. And it was always just the townies. And I know that's kind of a derogatory term, and I really, I mean, at the time I didn't know that there were these kinds of people here. And since we've opened the restaurant, like I said, it, it has really changed my mind about this town. It's wonderful. These people are, as I said, they're very generous, they're very loving, they're very giving, and they are a lot of fun. At least they've got some crazy stories. So, yeah, their greatest asset is their people, really is.
Next question is, what is one thing you hope to accomplish?
I can't say I'm hoping to accomplish anything, because I'm not coming here with a personal agenda. I'm not looking at trying to plant trees in every right, Greg's ignoring me, but that's okay. No, I, I have no agenda. I, I'm not trying to do anything other than just try to help out, to, to make some interpretations, to apply what's there, and, and make sure that everything is done the right way, just honestly and fairly.
So how much time do you think you would, could, or should spend per week or per month on city business? And second part of that is, how will you prepare for the meetings?
As far as the time, yeah, it would depend on what's in front of them. I would expect that any commissioner would look at the packet, and review it, and actually take the time to look at the applicable codes, regulations, rules, laws, whatever is applicable to that particular packet. The ordinances, you know, it's like, should we be doing this? And that's probably the first question that I would, you know, go through first. It's like, should we be doing this? Is this your purview? Is it, is it an inherently governmental function? Is it something that you have the authority in the? Have you been given the authority by the voters, or by the ordinance, or whatever, that you should be doing this particular thing? A good example of that is what you just did with the camping. Okay, yes, there is a problem with homeless, but you did the right thing. This, it's not your problem to solve right now. But what you did is you gave it to a committee, said, look at this, come back to us, tell us what's there. So you're doing the right things, but you're not jumping in full force and saying, well, we got to solve this homeless problem, let's take care of it right now. So, just like to follow along those lines. Yes?
Okay. So have you been in any positions where you have had to make difficult and/or unpopular decisions? And how did you, how did you think, how will you deal with the residents being unhappy with your decisions?
As far as dealing with difficult situations, I've done that my entire career. The, you're always faced with the, probably the right way to say it is, if you have all of the information, it's not a decision, it's a foregone conclusion. It's an old quote by Cecilia Luce or something like that, but you don't always have all the information. You're going to make a decision based on what you have available to you at that particular time. You're going to make a reasoned decision, you're going to research it the best you can, you're going to find out everything that you possibly can. And you're going to make that decision. Now, somebody comes back to you afterwards and says, hey, what, you know, it proves that, you know, you should have done something different. And it's like, yes, I understand that. If I would have had the information at that time, I would have made that decision, possibly. However, I'm going to make the best decision I possibly can, I'm going to explore all of the options, and I'm going to make recommendations based on that. Okay.
What is your vision for Adrian, and what is your plan for achieving that vision?
I would love to see Adrian prosper, but without losing the small-town feel. I would love to see business come to town. I will, hopefully, if, you know, I'm becoming involved in the community, I'm hoping to be able to follow up on things that might bring businesses here to town, that might bring more tourism, more people, more traffic through the town. I'm doing my own thing with the restaurant, I'm hoping to make people happy with food. Now, that's all I can do for right now. But I hope to, to be a part of Adrian's growth in the future.
Okay. So tell us about the most difficult challenge you faced in trying to work cooperatively with someone who did not share the same ideas.
Without getting into particulars, I worked on one project here, it was local. Local airport here in Metro Detroit. And we had a, I happened to be in charge of the passenger loading bridges, was one of the, one of the systems that I had to do, as a project manager for special systems. I had to purchase those. We went out, we went out to bid, we identified several different manufacturers. We had a source, like, we did an entire, you know, beautiful source selection and recommendation, sent it to the selecting official, and he picked somebody that we had discarded. And he walked in, he said, here. You need to sign this contract. And I said, ethically, I can't do that. I did not recommend this. And we had to work through that. There was, we tried to look at all of the options, look at all of the reasoning and the logic behind it. And I was given an ultimatum of either signing it or losing my job, and I just, ethically, I walked, I had to. But by doing so, I also dodged a Senate investigation, so I was okay with it, so.
Thank you for sharing that. How would you handle a situation where you know confidential information has been disclosed?
Oh. Well, this is, I just fall back on government protocol. Anytime that there's been a compromise of any, any PII, any personally identifiable information, you immediately notify the IT, you immediately notify your, your supervisors, superiors, and you make sure that those people are notified that their personal information is out there. We were drilled on that every day. It, it was so difficult to actually take personally identifiable information and send it out via email or anything else. We dealt with it on a daily basis. You've got to remember, we, you know, I was doing contracts, and you're dealing with not only the contractors, but all of the purchasing and the budgeting, and you know, we dealt with confidential information every day.
So what assets will you bring to the commission?
I'm sorry, Ms?
What assets will you bring to the commission?
Well, I believe that, as I said, the 30 years that I've worked as a project manager, I've done contract interpretation, budgeting, risk analysis, mitigation. I have worked with various contractors, I have federal contracting experience. And it's how to bring, my greatest asset during the whole thing was that I could take a diverse group of people. You know, I'm dealing with an owner who may have no construction experience, an architect who's, you know, trying to throw his own thing in there, the art, the contractors, and the local building officials, and everyone else, and you're trying to get all these different people that really don't speak a common language. And that was my forte for the most part, and where the most value that I gave to a project is I could bring all these people together and get them to a consensus, to get people to agree to, whatever it happened to be at the time, but at least make the compromises and do all of the explanations, and a lot of it is teaching. You have to teach them, or let them know what your limitations are so that they can, you can negotiate. But I was able to bring all those people together and into a common, common goal.
Great. One last question. What's your favorite thing about living in Adrian?
Well, it's not the snow. Favorite thing about Adrian? Well, right now, it's, it's the people. It's, it's who we're meeting as we're going. There's always somebody that's going to help you. The neighborhoods are fine. But it, it's really just the people. It's the thing I enjoy most about it, just being able to talk with them and share their stories, and have them come out and have some, have some good barbecue, you know, what else, so.
Okay, so is there anything you would like to share with us as a closing statement?
No, I think I've taken enough of your time. I've rattled you, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Hope you, I thank you for even considering me, and hope to hear from me again.
All right, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay in the audience if you'd like. Yes, right now is a break if we'd like to. Okay, we are going to take about a 10-minute break. Looks like, come back at 7 o'clock. Because we're running way ahead of schedule, we have bumped Kelly Castleberry. Thank you for coming early to the interviews tonight. We really appreciate that. You need to make sure the mic is turned on.
Does it work?
Yep, there you go. Well, Mrs. Castleberry, my name is Commissioner Mary Roberts, and I will be asking the questions tonight, only so that we, because of COVID, then I only have to hold the mic and we don't have to spread all the germs. But please direct all of your answers to the rest of the commission. Okay. So thank you for coming. And to start off, I'd like to have you give an opening statement and discuss your background and what is your motivation for wanting to be on the commission?
I was born and raised here in Adrian, Michigan. Is it, is working? Okay. And I am a crime victim advocate at the Lenawee County Child Advocacy Center. So I have the pleasure every day of working with the youth of Adrian and the surrounding areas. And so I get to see all of the exciting things that come through there and some of the not-so-exciting things that come through there. And it, I see a lot of things that we can improve and a lot of things that we can change. And I think I have a great insight and a very diverse background. And I have a very diverse group of friends, and I look forward to bringing their voices to the commission. The biggest challenge facing the city of Adrian is the economy is obviously still rebuilding, so I think building foundations here is a part of the problem. But I think the political system is in quite a tumultuous time as well right now. So it's interesting to me to see the change in our commission and how that operates and things like that. I look forward to being a better communicator. I think that's one of the biggest issues that we have right now. And I look forward to making positive communication one of the key factors that comes out of our commission.
Thank you. So what is Adrian's greatest asset?
Definitely is people. We have great people. So I think that all too often we focus too much on the negative things that are happening. And we see a lot of talk about homeless. We see a lot of talk about blight. We see a lot of talk about those things. But I think it's important to celebrate all of the other great things that are happening in our community, too. So that one of the great things I would, I'd like to celebrate more is the people.
What is one thing you hope to accomplish?
I would like to bring, I work with kids, so kids are, they have a fascinating view of our world today. And regardless of politics, millennials and the kids have a very interesting way of bringing us all together with that, so. And their ingenuity with that. So I would like to get our children more involved in politics and get them a stronger understanding of what politics are and teach them to use their voice better. It's important for them to use it step by step. Step, Schoolhouse Rocks. I'm just a bill. Maybe bring that back. But I would like to get children more involved.
Thank you. So how much time do you think you would, could, or should spend per week or per month on city business? And then how will you prepare for the meetings?
I prepared for the interview by reading this book, so I am typically well-prepared. I did a lot of research in the 24 hours I had to prepare for this meeting on what the Open Meetings Act and Adrian's Ethics Policy and Adrian's Strategic Plan, things like that. So I do a lot of research and I try to be very well-prepared for whatever is coming. Oftentimes, we can't prepare. We have to be able to make decisions quickly. I have a full-time job, but, and I have children and a family. But outside of that, my community is very, very important to me. And I am willing to do whatever I can and spend any time that is needed, that I'm available toward helping out.
So have you been in any positions where you've had to make difficult and/or unpopular decisions? And how did you, or do you think you will deal with residents being unhappy with those decisions?
I have had, I have a very interesting background. I'm a Navy combat veteran. So I have been through some tumultuous things in my life and had to make split decisions and some decisions that weren't always popular with the general public. Especially as a young kid, I was, you know, 18 to 22, and I had to make some of those decisions. And as a victim advocate, I sometimes have to make decisions that aren't popular with certain folks and some that aren't popular with even the victims possibly that I'm working with. So dealing with very sensitive topics is something that I do every day. So I feel very comfortable that I can handle that.
So what is your vision for Adrian and what is your plan for achieving that vision?
My vision for Adrian is building on the community we have. We have a very proud history. We have some great things that we hold dear, but building on that and creating a more diverse outpouring of our public and our people to all of those events is one of the things I would aspire to see. I would like to see more people from all backgrounds bringing their kids to events where everybody can get together.
Tell us about the most difficult challenge you faced in you faced in trying to work cooperatively with someone who did not share the same idea.
I shared a small room with 30 females when I was in the Navy. So that was an interesting time. I think sometimes I have to take a moment or take a breath. I don't think you should ever speak out of anger. And sometimes listening is the best avenue to take when there is disagreement. Because learning to step out of your own box and hear what other people have to say so that you can have a better understanding of what's happening all the way around. And then speaking is probably how I would handle those situations.
Just a couple more, Kelly.
Sure.
How would you handle a situation where you know confidential information has been disclosed?
I work with confidential information every day. I can't ever talk about specifics of my job. And so that's, it's very natural for me. I'm not allowed to talk about most of the things I do every day. Confidence is key and it is not to be taken lightly.
So what assets will you bring to the commission?
I work with a multidisciplinary team of people every day. And I work with people from different backgrounds every day. And I'm fascinated by every one of them. So teamwork is something that I'm very good at and I look forward to participating in. I think one of the strongest assets of our community is building a very diverse team of people to work together. So I'm really good at teamwork. I'm a very strong and quick problem solver. And pretty, I look at problems as a way to make positive change. When we are able to take a problem and innovate and find some innovation in time, a way to make positive change. I think that's something that I'm very good at. I like to do and I look forward to doing.
Okay, so last question. What's your favorite thing about living in Adrian?
When I was married, my husband and I discussed where we would raise our family. And he is from the South. And we made a decision to come here to raise our family because of the community that we live in. Because in visiting here, he thought this was a great place. I was obviously born and raised here and definitely think this is a great place. And I love the history of Adrian. I love that I get to take my kids into the engine house and show them the fire pole that my grandpa slid down when he was a fireman here. I love the history of Adrian.
Okay, so at this time, you can have time to have any closing statement or like to tell us anything else that you are interested in sharing with us.
I am excited to be, possibly be, a part of a community of leaders that have worked very hard to make some positive change in our community. I have seen our commission go from some tumultuous meetings. I think that you guys are moving everything in a strong direction. And I look forward to being a part of that. I look forward to making some positive change with you.
Wonderful. Thank you for coming and for being a part of this. Thank you. You can shut it off. Yep, and you're welcome to stay in the audience. Not sure if Cynthia, is it Boshka, is here yet? She is here? Okay. Yes, please. Thank you.
Hello?
Good. Thank you for turning that on. So thank you for coming this evening. My name is Commissioner Mary Roberts, and I will be asking all of the questions tonight, just so that only one person has to touch the mic, essentially. Okay, but please direct your answers to the whole commission. Okay?
Okay.
So Ms. Boshka, is that how you say it? Boshka? At this time, you have time to give an opening statement. Talk about your background and what is your motivation for wanting to be on the commission?
Okay. Well, my name is Cindy Boshka, or I go by CJ. I am a local artist. I am a mom of nine children. I've lived in Adrian for 17 years. I came here 17 years ago with four of my boys. We came to the city homeless. And I have a heart for the city now because of the fact that I was welcomed very, I was welcomed to the city. Many people reached out and I felt like that was a really nice plus for a city to reach out to strangers. And I was made to feel home, at home, right away. The school system helped me out. I have a special needs son. So I dealt with the LISD. I love Adrian. It's my husband's birthplace. And I just would like to be more involved at this point in my life. I am a empty nester now.
Okay. So what is the biggest challenge facing the city of Adrian?
Well, I know there's a lot of homeless in our city. I know that, I live on the east side. So I know that I've dealt with different people coming through that area of town. Dealt with people coming in from Detroit that are kind of with gangs and stuff like that. I've seen a lot of different things going on in the city that I would like to, you know, help to, help the city in working with different people, different groups of people.
Thank you. So what is Adrian's greatest asset?
It's growth. It's a growing city right now.
So what is one thing you would hope to accomplish if you were on the commission?
Just to be more involved in what's going on in the city with the government and being in a completely different area of learning and growing and just being involved with what's going on in the, I don't, I don't really, to be honest with you, know everything that you all are part of. And I just want to, to be able to extend my knowledge and my abilities to be a part of this community, a greater part of this community and have a better voice in this community.
How much time do you think you would, could, or should spend per week or per month on city business? And how will you prepare for the meetings?
Well, I'm pretty available because, again, I just have one person that I care for and that's my special needs son. And he doesn't really need a lot of attention. He's very self-sufficient. My husband works a lot of hours. So I am basically have a lot of freedom. Like I said, I am in the art community. So I opened a studio and that's the only other avenue of being busy. And that's not taking up a lot of my time right now. So I would be available any day of the week. I would be available to, probably at a moment's notice if I needed to be. I also would take time in whatever I have to read or whatever I have to do to be prepared, to prepare notes, to prepare for discussion or to prepare for whatever's going on in the city.
So have you been in any positions where you have had to make difficult and/or unpopular decisions? And how did, or do you think you will deal with residents being unhappy with your decisions?
Okay, well, I have run a restaurant, my own restaurant in Kansas City. And I've been in management for many years with different retail, different types of businesses that I've always been in management. So I've had to deal with people, especially in restaurants. I've had to deal with people that have had to ask to leave. So I'm not, I don't think I have a lot of issues with trying to be straightforward with someone.
What is your vision for Adrian? And what is your plan for achieving that vision?
Well, my vision is to see, hopefully, a lot more jobs opening up and people being able to live out their dreams, whatever that might be. I hope to see that we would bring more comics here. And to do that, I hope that I would find a way to draw people into Adrian.
So tell us about the most difficult challenge you faced in trying to work cooperatively with someone who did not share the same idea.
I think I'm, I think I've had to deal with that a lot lately because there's a lot of opposing people, right? There's a lot of people opposing each other right now. And I feel like people have the right to have their opinion. I don't try to put anybody down for what they think or what they feel or what they, you know, I try not to get emotionally involved like that. I just try to see other people's point of view. And I don't always agree with everybody. And they don't always agree with me. But that's not a problem for me. It's not a problem for me. I just, I know that there's people that get angry. I've seen some of the things that go on. And I would hope that I would be able to bring resolution instead of a fight.
Just a couple more questions. So how would you handle a situation where you know confidential information has been disclosed?
If I was given compliments?
Sure, if you were given confidential information that you knew you shouldn't, people shouldn't know about.
Okay, well, I can keep things to myself. I'm, I have a lot of children and I've had a lot of issues that go on, you know, that I've had to deal with in my lifetime. And not everything's for everybody to know. And if it's confidential, it's confidential. It's not to be put out there.
So what assets will you bring to the commission?
I hope that I would bring new ideas. I hope that I would bring another, you know, another view. I hope that I would be open to, again, learning and helping others to learn from me, too. I mean, I have a lot of experience in many different areas of my life. And mainly, my life is life experience. So hopefully, I would bring my experiences to the council and it would be something that people could glean from.
So last question. What's your favorite thing about living in Adrian?
The people. I love people. And I just, I've been able to meet a lot of people throughout the 17 years that I've been here. And that's my passion, people.
Okay. So at this time, you have an opportunity to do a closing statement. Tell us anything about yourself that we didn't hit upon. Is there anything you'd like to share?
I can't think of anything else.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, would you like this back? Oh. Can you go let Ms. Boshka know that she can stay in the audience? I'm so sorry.
At this time, we'll have the discussion of the candidates. And we're going to need to pass the microphones around. So can I grab those wipes? Because we're going to have to do that. I just realized that, sorry. Thank you, Greg. Would anyone like to go first?
All right. I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight. And we appreciate all four individuals throwing their hat in the ring. Not calling this a boxing match, but based on my scorecard, I'm comfortable making a decision tonight. And I'm interested in hearing my colleagues' opinions. Right now, based on my scorecard, I'm going to throw, I'm going to throw there, I'm going to support Kelly Castleberry. And I want to hear everybody else's discussions and conversations about it.
Again, to echo Commissioner Helt's comments, I appreciate everybody. There were six at the beginning that applied. One pulled out. And then Mary read the other one. And also, I'd like to thank Commissioner Roberts for being our emcee and leading up the interview process. It was very well done. Any comments that I make about the candidates aren't necessarily negative comments against other ones. They're just my observations related to the individuals. Mr. Jacobowski, I liked his opening. Mr. Jacobowski, I liked his opening comments about bringing in a different perspective. Working in private sector, working with teams, that impressed me as I was scoring his comments and his questions. CJ, I think she as well brings a very different perspective, a very unique perspective of owning businesses, small businesses, raising, I believe she said, nine kids, and working through things that way. Probably one of the most impressive things to me was when Ms. Castleberry came up, and she had a binder full of prepared material. That's what being a commissioner is about, is being prepared and being read and being ready to, whether it's defend a point, or just own a point, or your perspective, and be ready to talk to a group of peers about that. And so those are my general observations related to the candidates this evening.
Again, I appreciate everybody's participation tonight. It's great. Commissioner Roberts for, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, for your participation in reading the questions. I agree, again, with both Commissioner Halt, Commissioner Watson. You know, I look at it, and I don't want to be negative. I see good and areas that I have concerns about probably every candidate there, but I do see a lot of good. And, you know, this is the first time that the mayor and I have participated in one of these appointment processes. So this is, you know, this is all new for me. But like I said, I see a lot of very positive things, and what I liked from everybody's comments tonight were the things that they appreciated about our city. And I think any one of them would provide us with kind of the passion that we all have currently on the commission, and would just add to that. So I'm also comfortable in making a decision tonight, and, you know, we can move forward from there. Let's hear what, you know, the other commissioners have to say. Thank you.
Well, again, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I know that it's not easy to get up at the podium and speak, especially when you don't have any idea of the questions that are going to be thrown at you. So I was really impressed with what I heard tonight. I really like what Mr. Jacobowski brings to the, to the team as far as being a project manager, and some of that background that he has. I like the comment that he made about making the best decision that you can make with the information that you have at that time, because we're always faced with that. Mrs. Castleberry brings a very diverse background. I'm somewhat familiar with some of her work, and it's, it's a very difficult work. Also, the fact that she has a Navy background is very impressive to me. And the fact that she does work with confidential situations on a daily basis. CJ would bring a totally different flavor to the group, given her experience. So I was happy with a number of things that I heard tonight. And I, too, I'm comfortable moving forward tonight.
So I feel that I can move forward, too. And I wanted to make a couple, just a statement, that I feel that a good commission is like a puzzle, and that each of us complement each other. And I feel that that's what happens with our current commissioners. What I'm looking for in a commissioner is someone who fits a piece of that puzzle, who fits in. You can be agreeable without always agreeing. I don't want someone to come in with an agenda necessarily. Someone who is a good listener, a listener first, really, and who does their homework, and can ask questions, and then make a decision based on the best interests of the city. Many of our decisions are not black and white, and we need to be able to see so many shades of gray. But the most important thing that I'm looking for tonight is someone who loves Adrian, someone who's going to be a positive face, a positive force within Adrian. And I do think all four candidates that we had tonight really do love Adrian as their home. I mean, I feel like we could hear that in their voices. And they have really good backgrounds and experiences. But yeah, I can make a decision tonight, too.
If there's one overwhelming factor that I wrote down here and kept underlining, because every single person tonight commented and said, "The people, the people." That was literally the theme that stuck out. And that was really great to hear, that everybody loves Adrian because they love the people, or they thought that was the best asset of Adrian. And it really is the people. And I think it was really great, we had so many diverse backgrounds, and there wasn't anybody that was the same, and that's what makes it great, and we're all unique. And I just really loved the passion, and the wanting to be involved, and those qualities that I heard coming out of everyone that interviewed tonight. And I just really thank everyone for getting up here and doing the interview process this way. This is not easy, especially in this big room. You know, people are on Zoom right in front of you. It's a little bit different of a setting now, and with everything going on, and having to speak through a mask, and, you know, and all of these obstacles. And it can be very scary when you're standing up here, you know, getting asked questions that you didn't know what you were going to get asked. And so I just really thank everyone that put in an application and went through the process, and was willing to step out and do something for their community, instead of just talking about it, and you're willing to take that step. So thank you. One thing that did really stick out to me tonight was being prepared. And I will say that one thing that really stuck out to me is when Mrs. Castleberry brought out the book, and, you know, and she was prepared, and she had looked through it, and she had looked at OMA and, you know, ethics policy. And doing your homework is definitely key. I mean, we still miss things, even with six of us. We miss little typos sometimes, sometimes one of us catches it, sometimes none of us catch it, just depending. But it's, but it's definitely teamwork, and I feel like anybody that did interview tonight, though, would, would be willing to work as a team. Everybody comes, like I said, from a different background. We all come from different backgrounds. And, you know, we really work well as a team, and, you know, everybody has that same goal. Everybody wants Adrian to be better. And everybody tonight that got up and interviewed, everybody had that as their, as their back phrase, "We want Adrian to be better, we want to see it thrive, we love our small town, we want to see it prosper." And, you know, that's what we all want, that's why we're up here. That's literally why we do the service we do. And, but I, so I just thank everyone for, you know, coming out tonight. I do feel very confident myself. You know, I can, I can vote tonight. I have, I feel confident with direction I want to go. But I really, I just really am thankful that we heard a lot of different backgrounds, and different ideas, and different thoughts, and I hope we just take all those into account. Thank you. So do we want to do the reading system like we did in the past, like we have?
Unless someone wants to make a
Unless she just want to make a motion. That's what I'm asking.
Motion?
I make a motion to appoint Kelly Castleberry.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a support from Commissioner Halt. Now it is time for, if there's, if there's any public comment, you can come up, I will, this doesn't affect the microphone, but you can come up. You can give public comment also, if you were on Zoom, you may also, too.
Kent Tokars, 110 South Locust, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Commissioner Castleberry, congratulations. I fundamentally dis, oh, Kent Tokars, 110 South Locust. I fundamentally disagree with the majority of Adrian City Council, and would like to use my time to share some of my concerns that I've raised over the past three years. The City of Adrian has used an at-large system to elect city commissioners for the past 60 years, and it's my hope that you will be the voice for the underrepresented first, second, and third Adrian precincts. Current commissioners will tell you that the east side does not vote. This is true, and I believe that this is because eastsiders have been systemically disenfranchised by biased City of Adrian electoral system that predominantly represents precincts four, five, and six. I moved to Adrian 14 years ago, and the predominant question that I was asked when I met people was, "Why did you choose to live on the east side of Adrian?" What they didn't know is what, that I had come from the city of Ypsilanti. During my time with Adrian schools, I learned more and more about the Adrian east-west rivalries, and believe that this will not change until the city abandons its at-large system of electing commissioners in favor of a commissioner for each precinct. Think about it, more than 75% of the City of Adrian employees do not live in the city. Our commission is stacked with westsiders, and people wonder why the west east side does not vote. The City of Adrian has a pension deficit that exceeds $21 million, and current commissioners are going to try to sell you on their plan to pass the debt on to our children and future commissioners down the road with their so-called 20-year plan. Don't believe it. You will hear about a two-tiered system and plans where new employees are put into a new pension system. What you will not be told is that it takes longer to pay down the old system because you have less people paying into the current system. Pay close attention to what a 1% or 2%, or even a 3% drop in value to the pension deficit will do. Emergency management comes in at, when the pension deficit falls below 60%. And the current commission is gambling on what the state will do as City of Adrian property taxes decrease, values decrease. When you are asked to approve the hiring of a new employee, please be prepared and perform your own Google search using the employee's name plus the word resignation. The current commission recently hired someone who had been forced to resign from two positions, and left a third for speculative reasons. This person lasted three weeks. And while I am all for providing people with a second, third, and fourth chance, number four is too much, and hopefully, you will be the commissioner who speaks up
Mr. Tokars.
And go
Mr. Tokars? Hi, City Attorney, I'm here again. This is public comment based on whether you think that any of the candidates or the motion should move forward. Ms. Castleberry has not yet been voted in, and if she is voted in, I'm certain you could arrange a time to meet with her and discuss your concerns as a citizen.
I'm bringing, I'm bringing Ms. Castleberry up to current conditions.
Mr. Tokars.
When asked, when asked to vote on the next drinking boundary around the city, please ask for clarification on what color the painted line will be. I attended a majority of the meetings and only recall one discussion involving the posting of signage. I am of the opinion that the Adrian City Administrator should have received a written reprimand in a formal letter in his file or
Thank you.
Is there any more public comment pertaining to Resolution R 20-188, a resolution to appoint Kelly Castleberry to fill the vacancy of the city commission? Hearing none, are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor? If the other three that do not get approved tonight are interested in still serving the city, there are many opportunities on other commissions, and we'd love to have you still participate in city government. So please keep that in mind.
This job is really hard. Being a business owner, you get people coming into your business with complaints and concerns, and making yourself accessible is key to this job. If the three candidates did not get, if Ms. Castleberry gets appointed tonight, I would like to see those three individuals stay engaged. Jamin, I remember when the city cut the recreation department, you were there in that meeting. That's how I got involved in the city, too. I ran for office and lost. Actually, I got dead last. People want, if you put your hat out there, or throw your hat in the ring, they want you to quit, they want you to stop being engaged. I did not. I worked harder, educated myself more about the intertwines of how the city runs, and I ran again, and I won. And then I won a second time. But I'll go back to, this job is very hard, and it's a lot of time, it's a lot of breakfasts, a lot of lunches, a lot of late-night phone calls. I think that Ms. Castleberry is very qualified, and I was very impressed with some of the different backgrounds of other candidates. But the reason why I wanted to talk right now is because I wanted to keep those individuals engaged, keep coming to meetings, read the paper, you know, be a voice for your community, because throwing your hat in the ring and getting up here in front of the six of us is not easy. But I really want the folks, you know, that if Ms. Castleberry is appointed, to stay engaged, because the more people engaged, the more we can move the city forward.
All right. Resolution R 20-188 is a resolution to appoint Kelly Castleberry to fill the vacancy on the city commission. We have the motion from Commissioner Watson, with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. For those on Zoom, it was a unanimous vote for Kelly Castleberry to fill the position on the city commission, because I know that you cannot hear Robin. At this time, we are going to have our public comment. Just to reiterate, it is a three-minute time limit. You state your name and address before you begin. Thank you.
Kent Tokars, 110 South Locust, and I guess I'll just finish up. So I am of the opinion that the Adrian City Administrator should have received a written reprimand in a formal letter in his file for installing signage that directly targets the homeless prior to a city council vote on camping in the parks. I'm hoping that the new commissioner will take that step. When you are asked as a commissioner to vote on the next drinking boundary around the city, please ask for clarification on what color the painted line will be. I attended a majority of the meetings and only recall one discussion where there was, where there was, that involved the posting was, where there was, that involved the posting of signage. Nobody ever talked about painting a blue line on all the sidewalks. The Adrian City Commission spent a large amount of their time during the pandemic discussing public reaction to the approval of a dog park. I attended the meetings and only recall the approval of a fence. Nothing more and nothing in the minutes. Months later, we discovered that additional scope was performed without approval and the budget went 30%, they went 33% over budget. The water department generates millions of dollars in revenue, but we were going to borrow money to buy new meters. Why aren't the meters accurate in the first place? Last week, the city approved a special assessment district for the DDA with a $60,000 contingency for cost overruns on a $150,000 project. Something doesn't smell right in Denmark. The city is going to tell you that they do not have money to fix the roads, but we're able to purchase new streetlights, digital banners, and flag holders for the DDA. All of this without a special assessment district. The city approved energy bonds. Please, Commissioner Castleberry, look into how we are going to save energy with security cameras in a Kefop system. It has been several years now and council still has not established a system to prevent the construction of an emergency water fountain using taxpayer dollars. It is bad enough that hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent on the farmer's market canopy north of City Hall. What is even worse is that the city has not done anything to get those vendors back. Can you work on getting those vendors back? The City of Adrian spent a half million dollars upsizing a water line to the hospital without a plan to sell water, to sell water. Someone was watching a Field of Dreams and the Adrian residents are now paying for it, along with this visionary's dream of breaking a Christmas tree record. Just to keep you in the loop, the city actually has to pour water down the drain to keep the water from becoming stagnant. Welcome, Commissioner Castleberry.
Hearing no more public comment, I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments?
I would just like to thank everyone for being patient with technology and us trying to make this meeting work in the best possible manner. I also want to remind you that we have a regular Adrian City Commission meeting on Monday, October 19th. It will also be in this location. I don't know the time yet of the pre-meeting, but the meeting, the regular meeting will be at 7:00 PM here. So I do invite you all to come. I also want to echo what Commissioner Helt and Commissioner Roberts had said. Please, all candidates that interviewed tonight, get involved. There's, there are a lot, a lot of opportunities. There's, there's other commissions, there's committees, there, there are ways to get involved. And we would love to get more people involved because just like many of you said, it, it's, it's not about just listening, just being negative or saying, "This is what needs to be fixed." It's going out there and helping it get fixed and working to make our city better. So thank you again. And at this time, may I get a motion to adjourn?
All in favor, say aye? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.